This Berkshire Regional Planning Commission meeting is now in session Thursday, May 19th, 2022. This will be a virtual meeting as allowed by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 20, which is until July 15th, 2022. As many of you have heard, this this meeting is being recorded. I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. Tom and I did have a discussion in regards to having a virtual meeting or having a hybrid type meeting with the office, which, you know, works for some people, but with the numbers the way they are with COVID, we decided virtual was the best way to go this time around. And I guess every time we have these meetings, we'll have to work through that. And come the month of July, the state's going to have something to say also. So we'll see how that goes, but we are all, we are here tonight, ready to go. First item, a call to order. We have a call to order, please, for those that are participating in this meeting.
Well, John, I think you did it. So that's, you've opened the meeting.
Oh, roll call.
Yeah, roll call, yes.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. If, when I call the name of your city or town, would you please just give me your name? So I know who's here. Adams?
John DeValle, alternate.
Alfred? Beckett? Cheshire?
Peter Crowe, delegate.
Thank you. Dalton? Agremont?
Mary McGurn, alternate.
Thank you. Florida? Great Barrington?
Adrian Pachano, delegate.
Malcolm Fick, alternate.
Thank you. Hancock? Hinsdale? Lanesboro? Lee?
Buck Donovan, delegate.
Thank you. Lennox? Monterey?
Laura Mancy, delegate.
Okay. Mount Washington?
Jim Lovejoy, alternate.
New Ashford? New Maribor? North Adams?
Alheadham, delegate.
Otis? Peru? Pittsfield? Sheila Ervin? Richmond? Sandysfield? Savoy? Sheffield?
Sorry, Hoy, delegate.
Stockbridge?
Christine Raff, what's an alternate?
Thank you. Tarrington?
Amanda Hamilton, delegate.
Washington? West Stockbridge? Williamstown?
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor?
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Thank you. And that is the roll call.
Thank you, Sheila. Tom, who else do we have in the, in the meeting this evening that, that are not members of the BRPC Planning Commission?
Well, we have one of our invited speakers, Eileen Peltier, who will be speaking later. And also, I'd like to introduce our new intern, Emma Doane, who is, it just started up earlier this week.
Okay, welcome.
And we have PCTV and Brittany from iBerkshire as well.
Kyle, do you have something you'd like to add?
No, I was just waving to Emma, thank you.
Okay. That's a waving to me.
Welcome, welcome, Emma.
Right down, next community home. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the March 17th, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Roger Bolton.
Second. You get that second? Sheila?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we have motion, second. Any discussion, omissions, changes? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
The roll call will be done in the order of the towns, and I'm just going to call first names. John? Adams?
Yes.
Peter? Cheshire?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pedro?
Upstain.
Buck?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Uh, Lovejoy? Yeah, yes.
Kyle?
Yep.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry? Yes. Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And Douglas?
Yes.
Whoops, Roger?
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, the votes unanimous, thank you. Next item is comments from the public. Anyone from the public who would like to offer any comments regarding any topics which are on the agenda or other matters which they wish to bring to the commission's attention? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the commission? Hearing none, we will move on to delegate and alternate issues. Any issues that the delegates or alternates would like to bring up that is not on this evening's agenda?
Okay.
I'd just like to note that in the previous minutes, Sarah Hudson has been listed as the representative from Tarrington, and I've taken over, I've been the Tarrington rep for about, for a year. Thank you.
Okay. So, Tom, since we already voted on that, do we, we can go back and make that editorial update, right?
Yes, we can make that correction. We'll just make that correction.
Thank you.
For the record.
Okay. Any, any other delegate or alternate issues? Next is the Executive Committee actions. Those are listed in your packet that you received. There, is there, if there's any questions, Tom would be, or myself, or the executive committee members would be happy to respond.
I, hi, I, I would like to just make a clarification.
Sure.
Excuse me. There's a mention of a letter from the Environmental Review Committee to the Secretary commenting on a bridge replacement in Sheffield, and that letter doesn't exist. The staff and I, as Chair of the Environmental Review Committee, looked at the ENF, and staff and I also attended the virtual site visit by Zoom, and we found the ENF quite adequate, and the environmental impacts were very temporary and very slight. And we allowed any member of the Environmental Review Committee to disagree with this, and no one did, so we did not meet, and the commission has not sent a letter. That approval at the previous, at the Executive Committee meeting was to anticipate the possibility of sending a letter before the next meeting of the Executive Committee or the commission, but it was not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. So this is a document that provides information. We do not vote on this. Tom, can you make that editorial uptake?
Well, we can put that in, sure, but I mean, the action was taken, that the committee was authorized, as the motion was, to submit a comment. The fact that you didn't do it, I mean, that's, you didn't do it, but the, the committee was authorized to do that. That's what the action was.
I see. Anything else, Roger? Do you agree with that?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the Executive Committee actions? All right. Next, we have Proposed Transportation Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2023 to 2027. And I believe, Tom, we have Anuja, who's going to review this with us?
Yes.
That's correct, yep.
Yes, so I'm going to share my file so that we have the document. Can everyone see?
Before you start, Anuja, let me introduce you a little bit.
Yeah.
Anuja Corrales is our principal transportation planner, who is really the person who is in, in charge of the tip process, as well as who works on transit.
Thank you, Tom. So this document, the Transportation Improvement Program for the fiscal year 2023 to 2027, was included in the packet which was received by all the members. I hope everyone had a chance to at least look through it. It was a huge, large document with 100-plus pages, with lots of tables on, in it. So what is a transportation improvement program? And what does this document contain? I know that there are a few people in, in the meeting right now who are also a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Berkshire MPO, but I'll try to be brief and try to explain what the tip is and what the process is. What does this document include? TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Program, is, is fiscally constrained, prioritized, multi-year program for the implementation of transportation improvement programs, federally funded, all the federally funded transportation projects, improvement projects, needs to be listed in this document to be eligible to receive the funding. And also, it's a, it's a planning tool for the metropolitan planning process. It require, it's required by the transportation legislation, the most current, by partition infrastructure bill, infrastructure law, and previously the FAST Act, which is the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act. So it is also required by, by those legislations, all the MPOs prepare this document, and all the federally funded transportation projects be listed in the document. And as, as, as the funding is limited, the planning process is, is to make the projects identified, which are really critical in the area, and it is prioritized, basically, for that process. So a brief history on the act, required by the Bill Act, which is the by-partitioned infrastructure law, it, it is, this law is based on the FAST Act, which requires that all the metropolitan planning process does a planning based on, performance-based planning process. And, and it, it, all, all those information are listed in the document, so I'll not go through it, but it requires that it is a performance-based planning. And also, the difference between the, the new act and the FAST Act is that it, it has eight different program, funding programs for the highway projects. There are two new programs which are under the new act. One is for the Carbon Reduction Program, which is called CPR, CRP, and the other is called PROTEC, which is for the Resilience, Resilency in Transportation Planning. I don't, I don't remember the full form of PROTEC, but I think I have it. It's called Promoting Resilient Operations for Transportation: Transformative, Effective, and Cost-saving Transportation. So those are the two new areas where the act, it requires us to program projects related to those, so that those are the two new funding category. So I'll move on. As I said, it's a prioritized five-year, multi-year program. So the first year of the TIP, which is year 2023, it is a five-year from 23, the 23 to 27. The first year is more critical than the other years because we revise this document every year, so we get to work on the other years again. So how this process, TIP process starts? So every year, beginning of the year in January, the, the MPO or the staff from the BRPC, who we are the staff to the MPO, we solicit projects to the towns. So you have, must have received, your highway department, everyone receives that, oh, we are working on the new transportation, and we would need any new projects you have identified or updated information on the projects which are already in the TIP. So this is, this is the time when the towns are involved, but even before we start this process, there's a parallel process going on with the identification of the project with Maston. So the towns are required to work with the Maston District, District One office to identify the projects which are needed in your area, if it qualifies under the TIP program, and have that worked out for the, it's called the TIP initiation form, and work with the Maston on that. So once the, the project is identified by Maston as eligible project for TIP, so every year when we solicit project, those projects are identified or eligible for the TIP funding. So once we receive the solicitation, the back, the forms, we prioritize, we evaluate the projects. The TIP process, the Berkshire MPO has eight different criterias to evaluate the projects, and based on that, we prioritize the project. Every year, as I said, there are different funding categories, but again, the TIP process or the TIP document includes projects for highways, for transit, for bridges, and for, even for bike pad, all modes of transportation. So there are different funding categories and different funding sources. The MPO is more involved with the highway funding sources. We do get the regional target every year, which is around, used to be $8 million a year, but now it has increased with the new infrastructure bill. We have, we receive like 10 million for a year. So that money is, the MPO gets to work on or prioritize the projects. What's the local needs, or what are the projects which are more required in the area? So we, the MPO staff or the members of, gets to prioritize those projects. So the process starts, we prioritize, we bring the different scenarios to the MPO. So right now, based on those scenarios, MPO picked the scenario which is, which, which was the most effective, in the sense the project was ready to move. It was within the targets we received, and also it was a priority for the area. So based on that scenario, this whole TIP document was prepared, and which is in front of you. So in 2022, under the highway projects, which are, as I said, 23 is more critical, we have funding around 615 million, 615,729 dollars for, for the transit projects. Likewise, for the bridges, it's a significant amount, it's 22,699,000 dollars identified for the bridges, and then the other remaining for the highway projects. Based on our regional targets, the main highway project in the area, which will be constructed in 2023, is the BMC Area Improvements, which is improvements of the intersections near the Berkshire Medical Center, which includes the intersection improvement. And also, there is a, a series of roundabouts in the area. So at the Fourth Street and Tyler Street intersection, and in front of the BMC area on Fourth Street, there will be changes on, on the traffic movements over there, when the project is completed. In year 2023, the other project which is for the bike pad, which is significant, is, is the expansion or extension of Asher-Wolton Pick Rail Trail from Merrill Road, from the Crane Avenue to Merrill Road. This, recently, there was integration of the other stretch, which was from Crane Avenue to Dalton Avenue. So there, this, the bike pad project has been significant in Berkshire County, because we have been, every year, we have been working on the new project. Once that completed, there will be, from Pittsfield, like, we have the trail of around 16.25 miles from Pittsfield connecting to Adams. And there are other projects, like after, from Adams extending, extending it to North Adams, and in South, from here to Lenox. So those projects are still like under review, or it's, the alignments are still working on, but it is the aim that one day, though, we'll have a trail going from Vermont all the way to Connecticut. And there are like bridge replacement projects in the area, too. I think it will be beneficial, I'll show you the complete, the map, which shows all the projects in five years identified in the Berkshire County. So if you look at here, the lines represent the highway projects, the dots represent the bridges, intersections are plus sign, and the bike, bike pedestrian trails are like dotted lines. Overall, in five years, with all the projects in, we had like 21 bridges identified for the five-year program for the cost of 99,27,111 dollars. Highway, there are 11 highway projects with the cost of 61,945,028 dollars, and the bike trail, there are three bike trail projects identified for 18,118,841 dollars. You can see, there's only three bike trail projects, but the bike trail projects are pretty significantly expensive constructing those trails. And we have around 20 transit projects for the cost of 4,907,211 dollars. Shown over here, all the projects are throughout the Berkshire County. You can, as the population higher and more roads in Pittsfield, you see the more projects in Pittsfield compared to other areas. For the highway projects in 2023, we have, as I said, we have BMC Area Improvements, and in year 2024, we have, again, in Pittsfield, it's Merrill Road, Reconstruction of Merrill Road with the, and then in year 2025, we have in North Adams, Ashland Street, Reconstruction of Ashland Street in North Adams. And in, again, back in year 25, it's again the other stretch of East Street, it's when the, where the Merrill Road, Road ends, the East Street starts over there. So it is the East Street in Pittsfield from Merrill Road to Lyman Street, that's listed in year 2025. And in year 2026, we have Agremont, Agremont Mount Washington Road, that starts in year 2026 and completes in year 2027. And, and then in '27, we have the Dalton Division Road starting in '27, and which will be completed in 2028. So this process, the whole TIP process takes five, six months from the start, during, like, the start of the year, and we prepare the document, and then it endows, and it becomes, becomes a document, a planning document for the implementation of transportation improvement projects in, in the area, in the Berkshire region. So as I said earlier, all the transportation improvement projects funded through federal funding needs to be included in the document. So the document, if you had a chance to look through, there are different sections. The first, the first part talks about the legislation, what are the different legislation, and what are the requirements. Second part lists all the projects in the format required by the federal highway and federal transit. And, and then it is, and the other requirements of those legislations for the different funding sources are included in that. And then the fourth part are, has the same projects did in a different format, like by towns, by mode, which are much more easier to understand. And then the very last part of the document includes all the certifications, also including the greenhouse gas emissions and air quality analysis done for all those projects, how those projects are going to impact the area, if there are improvements in the area. So is there any question related to any projects or the planning process? I know it's very briefly I said, but if any, anyone wants to know more about what the planning process is, or the TIP planning process is, please let me know, so I can walk it through or explain it to you, how the towns can be involved, and what's the process for the towns to have their projects identified, identified for the TIP, and then included in the TIP? Yes, Doug?
Yeah, just, just an observation. If you look at the, the spread of projects, they go right down the center of Berkshire County. I, I'm wondering how some of the East and Wetz communities that not seem to be participating in this can engage in a discussion of whether east-west transportation here might, might need addressing.
Yes, thank you, Doug. It's a very good observation, yes. Again, if, if you understand the Metropolitan Planning Process, MPO, it is, it nationwide, any town, it's any town or urban area more than 50,000 population is, is, has to be registered as the MPO, but in Massachusetts, it's slightly different. Here, whole Berkshire County as a whole is, is an MPO, but most of our urban area is Pittsfield and its surrounding. So, and most of the populism live, lives within that area, and the highways are the roads which are here are more urban. So those are the other criterias looked into when we prioritize the projects. That's the other reason why you see like more projects happening in Pittsfield, but we try every year in the, in the prioritization process to have the projects in both like north and south, and to the small communities, too. And the other requirement is like the, though the TIP process, it's like you get the money for construction, but the town has to pay the design money sometimes, and there is a long process involved. For small projects, it's not viable, or it's not efficient to use the TIP funding. They do receive like a Chapter 90 funding and other funding, so smaller towns tend to utilize those money and not do the TIP process, until, unless it's a huge construction project, or it's a bigger project.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Is, is there any other question?
Could you, Anuja, could you turn to page 11, please? Put that up on your screen.
Page 11 on the TIP document?
Yeah, page 11, please.
Okay, let me scroll down.
And halfway in the page down to the, towards the end.
Okay.
Okay, so, Anuja mentioned that the communities each year, we are, we provide our possible programs, and in order to be moved along quicker on the list, is you need to provide the engineering costs and have that completed. Now, what, that is a problem sometimes in some communities, because you have to make a decision to use Chapter 90 money that you're giving to the state, which doesn't raise that much every year, to use Chapter 90, I'm sorry, I'm back in the school days, Chapter 90 to do your, to pay for your engineering costs for a project, road project, or not, you know, those are decisions you need to make. And I just wanted to show, if you can go down, you can see the members of the MPO here. Our chair, I'm a member, because, see if you can stop right there, you can see Mass DOT, we, is the Chair of this MPO in Berkshire County, and we're meeting. we is the chair of this MPO in Berkshire County and we're meeting next week. And we also have support from Mass DOT District One, very supportive. They support the meetings, give us status on projects, things like that. Then the next item is the BRPC. So you see myself, the chair, I'm a voting member of the MPO. And one of the responsibilities is to approve this document, this five year transportation improvement program document, which Manuja went over. The areas that affect us, it's a big document, a lot of information, and hopefully most of you read it. But as you go down, you could see like she indicated Pittsfield, North Adams, usually the mayors and the and the mayor of North Adams needs to be updated, but they are voter, the city of Pittsfield has a vote, North Adams has a vote. And then you get into these subregions and you have representation and these individuals are voted on. Every so many years, there's a meeting that Clayton will call for anyone in that subregion who would like to be on this MPO, you know, which I've done, we show up, there's a vote. And if you're elected, you can be an alternate or whatever. So you have four subregions here that are also voting members of the MPO. So that's the makeup. Now, if we move to page thirteen, the last thing I have, you move to page thirteen, you can see the breakdown of the subregions. And this is for individuals, you know, indicate what's an MPO, how come we don't get projects or whatever, who do we talk to? You can see that North Adams and Pittsfield, they have a vote. I have a vote because I represent as chair of the BRPC. But you also have the north subregion, which which is the the top color, green. And and there's a representative for that area that votes. And there's a representative for the north central area, all those communities, there's one vote. When we vote on, when we vote on projects or when the rankings come out from the BRPC staff, we will vote on on the on the what projects should be done first and so on, and also moving things around. So there is representation, we meet you know, once a month, once every six weeks to discuss all of these road projects in in Berkshire County. So that's the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And sometimes you'll see a B in front of the MPO, it's the Berkshire Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's the group that determines and works with the communities to determine what road projects, bridges, working with the state, of course, and Mass DOT, what projects do get done. So there is representation, there are there are names that vote. So just to give you a heads up, if you're confused about what is this MPO, it's described in this documents, so please read that again. But what I'm gonna need, what I would like to have from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, since I vote, I would like a motion if I can in a second to approve this tip transportation improvement program for October one, twenty twenty two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. And if you approve it, then I will vote to approve. And if you don't, I will vote not to approve if we have reasons to state for that. So I'm looking for a motion that will allow me to vote the way that the that the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission would like me to do so.
Motion to to have John vote to approve the tip as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Sheila, second.
Any discussion? Here, no, this is a roll call vote.
Again, by by town, John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pedro?
Hi.
Buck?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim? Kyle?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes. Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tom, next we have Proposed Transportation Unified Planning Work.
John, could I just add something under this?
Sure, can.
The MPO is a public body and it's is subject to the open meeting law. And I think any citizen can get on a list, a mailing list to get notifications of meetings and agendas and minutes. I I'm actually on one of those even though I never come, but I just want to emphasize that it's, you know, it's an open, open meeting process.
Right, and we we post all the thing on the website, the BRPC website, the under the meeting link. We have all the information what was presented and the minutes, everything I posted on the website.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, next we have the Proposed Transportation Unified Planning Work Program, Tom?
Yes, so this is another required document that our transportation program has to get get approved every year. This will be a similar situation as we did with the tip. We'll we'll need to authorize John as chair at the MPO to approve this. Cleet Kuss is the, who is the BRPC Transportation Program Manager, is going to give a an update about what what's in the plan and what really what our work activities are going to be starting in the federal fiscal year, October one of this year. Take it away, Cleet.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate that. I'm gonna share my screen. The Unified Planning Work Program is an annual document that we prepare that set forth our activity in terms of the MPO staff and the related planning activities. And the entire UPWP consists of actually twenty four individual work tasks, and I'm not going to spend, you know, the next hour and a half explaining all twenty four. But I am going to highlight some of the more substantive ones that we will be focusing on this coming federal fiscal year. And if you can just bear with me one second, I need to pull up one more file, okay? This coming year, one of our major activities is going to be to develop the regional transportation plan. The regional transportation plan is a twenty five year long range plan which all MPOs are required to develop and ultimately submit that to the state and then it goes on to federal highways for ultimate approval. This planning process includes developing socioeconomic projections. There's a lot of public outreach and coordination that is involved to to get the input, to identify really what the needs are here in Berkshire County. The RTP focuses on a multitude of transportation modes. It's not just roads. We look at bicycle facilities, trails, pedestrian amenities. There's a focus on safety, something that's new this year is focused on carbon reduction and developing a carbon reduction plan. And directly related to that, when we look at the transportation sector, electric vehicles and the support infrastructure, i.e. the the charging stations are really central to all of that. So a large part of our staff's work in this next fiscal year is going to be developing that regional transportation plan. And next year, right around this time, we'll be presenting to the commission the plan that we are proposing as it'll be going through a comment period. Another thing that is really big in the Berkshires, a lot of interest and a lot of activity is bicycling. We just recently had another section or extension of the Elchwood Cook Rail Trail open up with the grand opening about a week or so ago. And, you know, we're actively involved in the planning for really all of the the bike trails within Berkshire County. And we're also a big proponent of the Commonwealth Complete Streets Initiative, along with some other new programs such as shared streets and spaces. And through the bicycle and pedestrian planning task, you know, this is where we are able to assist communities bringing forth projects and grant applications to get the necessary funding to actually, you know, implement and construct those new facilities. Under this task, we're also going to continue focusing on some of the planning activities that are occurring up in North Adams and Williamstown, more specifically, the Adventure Trail. There's a planning initiative going on in Lee and the town of Lenox is also pursuing some grant funding for a small trail segment. And once again, this activity within the UPWP allows us to be involved, you know, in these specific activities. A couple of other things here, you know, staff is going to look to promote bicycle parking because obviously, if you take a close look, not all of the public spaces have bicycle parking, so we think that this is something that's necessary and can be beneficial. Staff continues to be participants in the state's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. And then at the local level, there's a number of initiatives or groups that are focused on bicycling. And, you know, will continue to be involved and and support those efforts. Another thing that's important to the region is transit planning and through a task that we have in the Unified Planning Work Program, we continue, we can can continue to focus on first and last mile transportation needs, look at assisting with microtransit programs and potentially securing additional funding for for more of those pilot types of services. Another subtask relates to transit technologies. There's software coming out for ride share and it's important to, you know, be knowledgeable about what's out there because it may be more advantageous to go with a more current type of the software. We're going to continue to monitor what's going on with the electric bus technology as well as charging equipments because this is the future of transportation, it's it's the future of transit also. We're going to continue to provide support to the Regional Coordination Council. These are, you know, in, you know, groups that are focused on providing, you know, human transportation services. We're looking to update our coordinated human services transportation plan and also conduct an equipment inventory, which, you know, will provide benefits to potentially, you know, the microtransit initiative if we were to consider utilizing those vehicles and and maximize the use to get these vehicles available for microtransit services. Another task that we have within the UPWP relates to special studies. We're going to, you know, conduct sort of post pandemic analysis of the transportation systems, perform small scale analyses of problematic intersections and looking at traffic safety issues. The town of Lee is considering a grant for the main and park street intersection and with that, they are considering doing a demonstration project for a roundabout. And if they are successful in receiving those fundings, we will assist them with that effort. On an annual basis, we also perform a bottleneck analyses. So that's also going to be covered under this particular task. Traffic safety is another area that, you know, is important. And on an annual basis, we are involved in at least one safety audit with MassDOT. Also under this particular task, you know, should a community have a traffic safety issue, they can reach out to us and we can lend some assistance in terms of evaluating what the causation could be as well as providing recommendations. One other thing associated with this task is that we're looking to also develop a bicycle and pedestrian safety action plan. And sort of wrapping up, climate change is still something that is going to be at the forefront, even though the transportation climate initiative has gone away. There's still another, a number of other initiatives that remain. And, you know, what is really big and, you know, continues to be something that requires attention and focus as it relates to transportation is electric vehicles and the related charging infrastructure. And through this task, you know, that's where, you know, we're going to focus, you know, our attention and energies and, you know, supporting a steering committee that just recently was established. Two other things real quickly, freight and freight wheel planning. We have identified a need to develop a database of shippers and warehouses. And MassDOT is also conducting a park, a truck parking study. So you know, this is important to our region and our economy, so we're going to focus on those activities. And then one other task that we have relates to expansion of transit and rail services. I think everybody is aware that, you know, we're more than eager to get the east west or west east rail service moving. And, you know, once again, these tasks, this task, you know, allows us to be involved in that. The Northern Tier Rail Study is continuing and we're going to be involved in that. The Berkshire Flyer Service, you know, will continue into the next federal fiscal year. And once again, you know, this will allow us to continue to be involved in that. Moving on to the final piece of information, this is the budget spreadsheet. You can find this in the handout material on page forty three of the Unified Planning Work Program. And really, what you should get out of this particular slide is the total of twenty four tasks that are in the Unified Planning Work Program and the associated budget. These first two groupings are sort of our our standard activities. The management certification as well as technical support. The planning studies is is clearly the largest section. It's receiving almost half of the total funds in excess of forty percent going to all sorts of, you know, studies and initiatives that are listed here. And really, what what the budget numbers are indicative of is the level of effort that are going into these tasks. Overall, we have seven hundred and fifty one thousand dollars of of federal transportation planning monies that you know, make up the budget of the Unified Planning Work Program, which, you know, with the exception of fifteen seventeen thousand five hundred dollars of direct expenses, the remainder of that money is all staff time that goes into these activities. Um the remainder of that money is is all staff time that goes into these activities and studies, so. Uh having said all of that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Yeah, Doug Doug had his hand up, I think, first.
Yeah, I I just want to point out the interconnect of a couple of things you talked about in a positive way. You had micro transit and and you had first last mile and you had little vehicles. And I I just want to alert uh everybody that all of everything we put into, you know, the flyer or anything else is dead in the water if we don't solve those three problems. We we need the first last mile and it's probably going to be solved by micro transit and it's probably getting involved some electric vehicles. So we we have to look at the whole picture of this thi- thing because um abs- absent that solution, uh we got a problem, just just an observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I agree with you a hundred percent.
And and Doug, what uh Clete mentioned earlier about our regional transportation plan, that's really where this is, it gets integrated in, not just with our yearly work programs. So that's going to be something that's going to be important as well. Amanda?
Um, well, following following on um from what Doug was talking about, I mean, I uh I, you know, I I I am, I'm I'm noting the really very, you know, very substantial tranches of funding for you know, bike paths and bike infrastructure. Um and I want to think a little bit about is this going to be, is this going to help people get to and from jobs or school or training? Um or uh because my experience in in South County is, you know, biking is a wonderful leisure activity and so on, but it's fairly boutique. Um so I just, yeah, I wanted to put that out there and.
This is Doug, just jumping in as a BRTA member, along with Sheila. There are a lot of people who use the bike racks on buses. And BRTA just recently put a a new stop, for instance, at Allendale at the end of the new extension of the bike path to allow people who were biking down to then throw the bike onto a bus and proceed to work. Uh it it's part of an integrated system. I I know that some people think that this is boutique, but I thi- I think it's part of the last mile, first mile solution.
But it but also in 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 the more rural parts of of the county, I mean, the I I understand saying in in around Pittsfield that there are more buses, but you know, there's really not very much bus coverage here, so I I just, you know, I just sort of wanted to put that out there.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I think we're ready for a motion, John.
Okay, as we did with the tip, um can we have a motion to approve the Unified Planning Work Program?
I'm John Martin, Washington.
We have a second.
Second, Kyle Hammond.
You have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Roger?
Roger, you're omitted.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Douglas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh next, we have the presentation of Berkshire Regional Transit Authority, Tom.
Yes, so this is um, we've got a a a transportation-heavy agenda tonight. Um but I think it's all all related. Um as you mentioned, we heard from Inuzia that, you know, transit was included in the tip. We've just had a lot of discussion about, you know, micro transit. And earlier, um we submitted comments on some proposed changes to uh some of the routes that the uh Regional Transit Authority is 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 going to go ahead with, and we thought it would be very useful to have the um BRTA Administrator uh Bob Malnati kind of explain those and go over those, so take it away, Bob.
Thanks, Tom, and if I can share my screen. There we go. Uh first of all, thank you, uh Tom and John for allowing me to be in this platform. Uh I appreciate it uh greatly. Um I'm I'm going to walk back a little bit. This whole process began well over six months ago for the BRTA. Um with our operations, uh we knew that uh some funding was going to be lapsing. Uh that was a discretionary grant that was we received from MassDOT for some pilot evening service. Um and we went and issued a survey out to the public in December um to find out what their wants and needs were. I mean, anecdotally, we hear a lot of things, um but this is a good way for riders and non-riders also to put their stamp on what they would like to see. Uh we took what we received uh from that survey results in January. Did a little presentation to the board of the BRTA Advisory Board um about what the survey results would be, and we were incorporating it into some changes that we would be presenting uh to the board in in February. Uh made that presentation, um had some discussion, uh met with uh Planning Commission uh staff, uh got some input. Uh our board voted to uh go forward with the public comment period at the end of February. So we had all of March and half of April to have comments. We held uh three uh virtual uh meetings. We had two in public meetings. Uh and we had a a a way to make comments. Could leave a phone message. We had that transcribed. You could send us email and we even had regular letters um that what people wanted. So we took that back to our board and uh at our next board meeting. And it was approved in to go forward uh with the changes after we tweaked it to listen to what the public had said. And made some of those comments and and changed some of our original thinking. These are the main reasons why we did it. We were losing some grant funding, like I said. Uh we tried to maximize what the customer experience would be. We changed some schedules around, tried to get them, interline them a little better, uh made time changes for a couple of routes. Uh we wanted to set the stage for future electric. Uh we know it's coming. We know it's not something that you can go to the store and say, I would like five electric vehicles uh to do transit service. And we need a way to plug them in and charge them. Uh that's not something that can happen overnight. It's a long process. Um we've tried to look at different places where we could get some dwell time or buses would overlap or meet up um to possibly do some uh new charging with induction as opposed to wait till the end of the day and plug them in at the garage. And uh hopefully you'll have enough power in the vehicles to get out there. We also talked about micro transit. We need to, we need to try something and get some feedback, what works, what doesn't work, and then move forward. Uh we're also trying to look at North Adams as a possible mobility hub for the future for us. So there's about forty slides here. If you take notes of to what you might have questions on, and I can certainly uh wrap it up after that. Key points for Route One, we're changing other a a few of the uh the route where it's going down. Uh we had the route go down Plastics Avenue. It follows another bus. Well, let's head that go straight down to the Merrill Road intersection. Have it stop at the Ashwell to Cook Trail. Um this will be one of four vehicles that make that stop. So we'll be connecting the Route One that goes from Pittsfield to North Adams, the Route Four that comes from Dalton and Hinsdale to Pittsfield. And the Route Twelve and Fourteen, which are both circulator loops that go and connect the downtown to um Walmart area. Uh all four of those vehicles will be stopping at the Allendale Plaza. Uh we're trying to streamline some of the route uh by eliminating a Cheshire Loop. Would go down Church Street, uh Richardson Street. Didn't seem a a lot of activity there. Uh we're working with Cheshire to possibly have a couple of bus stops somewhere along Route Eight. Um we're working with them. Matter of fact, Cheshire Town Meeting is uh Tuesday night. We've been asked to come visit. And so all the changes that we're seeing were approved by the board, uh and these are also on our website. Uh WWW.BerkshireRTA.com, uh and you can find them there also as these presentations. So here's the highlighted section right here on the right where we're going to have four bus stops. Meeting, transferring it within, I believe, forty minutes of each other, uh whether it's inbound outbound. Um and inbound means coming into Pittsfield, outbound means leaving Pittsfield because we are centric to the Intermodal Center in uh downtown. Um we've changed some of the um schedules. Anything in yellow are the changes. So we've added up at the top some stops like Allendale Plaza. That's a new stop. We've changed some times. Those are highlighted in yellow. Um the Berkshire Mall is going to be now a demand stop instead of stopping there every trip in and out. If activity at the mall picks up, we can certainly revert back to a stop, but for right now, we're going to just go by it unless someone wants to stop. Um this is a weekday schedule. We have a Saturday schedule. We're trying to have the Saturday schedule very similar to the weekday. It just truncated in times. Uh this is one of the loop routes where we're going to continue the evening service on the weekdays. Um so this service stops at eleven twelve. It's the last time goes to the garage. So the last trip from North Adams um is at uh nine fifty and gets down to uh the Intermodal Center at ten thirty-five. Um Route Two, where the only thing we're going to change with Route Two is a little minor tweak. We thought we would make Bosque's uh area a demand stop over the summer and see how that works now that maybe I don't know if Tamarack Road is going to be the one that's fixed. Uh we added a little time point uh up here at the top of the schedule. And then we added one last trip of the day on Saturdays. Currently, bus stops at four thirty when it leaves Pittsfield to go to to uh Lee at the Premium Milelets and gets back here at six twenty. Uh we're adding the hour back into this to so the last service day will leave at five thirty on Saturday uh and get back here at seven twenty. Route Three in Williamstown connects North Adams and Williamstown over Route Two. Uh we're now going to service the Greylock Valley Apartments, so we're going to deviate both inbound and outbound on that trip. So that's new on the stops here, uh the Greylock Apartments. Uh we've had a new time point, so that's changed. And then we shifted um at the beginning and the end of the day, a a little bit of the times. So that's what's new on the weekdays. Same way with the Saturday. Those same changes. Uh Route Four, this uh most extensive, uh we have what's called a pulse system where on the half hour most of the buses that are touching the Intermodal Central Center leave here and go outward. Um Dalton was on the hour, didn't make a whole lot of sense, didn't connect with anything. So we are now going to change that schedule, so it is in line with all the other routes. We also are going to be this little loop, uh we're going to go bidirectional. Currently, we're going one way, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You'd have to go all the way to Hinsdale, come all the way back and it'd go on the loop. Uh it do this way, the new route will go up one direction and then back. Uh both inbound and outbound. So we've had some new stops that we've added. Uh and again, everything shifted at least that half hour, so now we will be at um the Intermodal at the half hour like we currently are. Uh this is the one route where it's still uh every other hour, we're running two-hour headway. Due to a staffing issue um and the lack of of qualified drivers. Uh so this unfortunately is one of the routes that was impacted uh last year and um it will be that way until we can hire additional staff uh to make sure that this runs properly. Uh we don't want to put something out there that's not reliable, and that's what we ran into last year. Um we weren't sure which route was not going to be covered because we didn't know who was going to call out. So again, Saturday schedule, uh everything is yellow because the times change. Uh Route Five, um we listened to some uh of our the comments that we received. And I think uh the Planning Commission staff was involved with this. We currently go uh one way on our route. Um it comes out of the Intermodal and goes down um Lakeway uh over into Pex, um and meanders by uh Teconic um and goes to north to Lanesboro and it comes back again. Um what we're proposing is we split the route. One hour it will do the current serving, serving the 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 current route. And the second route is going to go down Center Street to BMC, cover Upper North Street and go to Lanesboro and back again. So five A and five B um was what was proposed. So the every other line is the new service on five B uh and five A remains the same. And the same way with Saturday, uh we changed it a little bit on time points uh to to make sure that it lined up on our Saturday schedule. Route Eleven, which serves uh West Street and uh BCC. Uh we're no longer going to go through the Clock Tower Parking Lot. Uh there's a couple of routes that we currently go through parking lots. Not a good thing to do with transit, bus and uh accidents with vehicles that are backing. Um so we're going to eliminate that uh going through that parking lot. We're still going to have people stop at West Street uh down by the Big Y. Uh we will still do that. We changed our schedule a little bit, made a time points um a little different. And um we will still service BCC and we still service West Street. Both the weekday and the Saturday schedule. Route Twelve is uh the Southeast Circulator. Um William Street Plaza was another one we were driving the bus through. Um we will no longer do that. The bus will now just stop at William Street. We are going to turn the bus shelter around and look at uh having a sidewalk tying that to the street um so that we don't have to go through that parking lot any longer. Um and we added a little more time at the beginning of the day, starting Downing Parkway at five fifty. We have the luxury of um having the garage at Downing Parkway. And when a bus leaves the garage, they're in service so that anytime you see a bus, you can flag it down and and you can actually get picked up. There was a time where you saw a lot of buses running around. This is out of service and they couldn't pick people up. So it didn't make a whole lot of sense, so that's changed a number of years ago. Uh Route Fourteen, we were originally going to uh deviate this route to mirror the Twelve and go down Newell Street. Uh with the feedback that we received from uh our public, uh we are going to continue to go down um East Street, so it will service uh that area. Um it won't deviate down East and Elm and over onto Newell. Um so the Berkshire Innovation Center will be a stop still. We changed a little bit of the timing. we changed a little bit of the timing, um, because originally the one proposal that we had uh was going to have some different time changes when we shifted it, uh so it's gone back. Uh, Route Fifteen, uh West Pittsfield and West Husatonic Street. Um, we had a request uh with uh from Representative Farley Bouvier to see if we could run service out to Callahan Drive. Um, the two facilities out there uh wanted to see, uh, they said they were transit dependent workers. They work on a twelve hour shift, uh so we were able to accommodate that. Uh, instead of turning on Lebanon Avenue and taking the right or left and co- going down West Husatonic. We'll now make this little deviation uh a little further, go down and turn around here at at um Callahan Drive and then head back. Um, and then the schedule, um, we're leaving at uh six AM and uh coming back at six o'clock. Um, so that we have service out to Callahan Drive. If you needed to work for six in the morning, you can be there. And if you get out at six at night, we can pick you up. Crane Avenue was one route that uh we eliminated. Uh, we did some data points and the place that most people uh that wrote the row the current Route Sixteen uh which was Crane Avenue in Allendale uh was BMC and Allendale. So with the the proposal, um, the Route One and Four, the Twelve and Fourteen will be stopping at the Allendale part. Uh, the Route Five B will continue to go and serve uh Upper North Street. Um, and we're going to use the Crane Avenue Oak Hill Apartment area um as the microtransit uh test for us uh in that area. It's not on the slide, but um it will be. Uh, the Route Twenty-One, which goes from Lee Premium Outlets to Stockbridge and Great Barrington. Uh, we have added some different stops. Um, the Senior Center uh down by Big Y uh will be serviced hourly. Our original proposal was it was gonna be every other hour. Um, we would be servicing Simon's Rock on one hour and the hospital and the Senior Center on the other hour. Um, we said we could do, uh, we had some feedback. Uh, so the Senior Center will be receiving hourly service. That won't change. Um, it's still staggered where one hour we will go to Simon's Rock, the next we'll go to the hospital. Um, this route suffers from being very long and a lot of stops and a lot of miles in between. Um, and it was kind of unreliable. And this way here, we are trying to get it more reliable. Um, knowing that we're gonna only stop at these areas at at the certain times. Um, and then we added one more uh evening run uh leaving Pittsfield at five thirty and uh coming back at seven o'clock at night. Uh, right, the Saturday schedule, again, uh the Simon's Rock and the Hospital every other hour. Um, just a little bit shorter schedule than the day. The Twenty-One Express was the evening pilot service that ran usually from five thirty until um nine o'clock, uh was not well received. Did well when Simon's Rock was in session, but other than that, uh not not very well. Um, and with our funding constraints, uh this one, we will no longer be doing. Um, I'm sorry, that was the twenty-two, the Twenty-One Express. Yeah, there was that, that last uh evening trip. The Twenty-two, we're gonna be discontinuing that. Um, and again, that was the evening pilot uh service with where the funding is no longer there. Uh, the Thirty-four is going to continue evening service. Um, this was one that was paid for with the discretionary grant and now it will be under our regular budget. Um, we've changed uh because in our original presentation, we forgot to add Ocean State Job Lots on there and one of our customers uh asked about that and yes, we forgot to have that in there. So it was put back in in the schedule, uh and then we had to just uh sometimes uh at the beginning of the day and then at um MCLA. Again, the Saturday schedule. And our dipping our toe in the lake of microtransit. Um, we are looking to do a Monday through Friday, uh seven thirty to seven thirty program uh along the corridor of uh North Street, Dalton Ave, uh Allendale. So that uh origin or destination would be there. Uh, we do currently have what's called RM Pay, which is an online cloud-based account for our pair transit folks. Um, currently, we're transitioning from the ticket program where you had to come in and buy a ticket and then present that to the operator. Uh, that's gonna, that's being phased out. We're doing this online uh account-based uh program. Anyone using the microtransit will be uh using that. Uh, the fares, uh, we, I think, decided on uh three fifty was the fare uh for this. Um, and we're going to see how this works. We're we're constraining it um right now until we see what the demand is uh to see if we can replicate it and make sure that it doesn't blow up right right out of the gate. Um, and that's it.
Any questions? Thank you, Bob. Any questions?
A news. Yeah, I guess A news has got her hand down.
Sorry, Bob. I have one question regarding the microtransit. Uh, you said the microtransit is going to be along Route Seven. Um, so, so and you said the both the artisan and destination has to be within that zone? Or is it like anyone living in Pittsfield would be able to?
No, not anyone living in Pittsfield. People living in that corridor between Crane Ave, you know, Route Seven and Allendale. That's the, that's the, that's the part, target we're looking for. Um, and like if they're going to, it's either work-related or medical. So we have to include BMC as a campus for medical trip, so it's gotta go down to to that area. Um, and as far as, um, yeah, it can't be anywhere within Pittsfield.
So, so even the people who are living um on that like a zone, their destination has to be within that zone?
That's what we're looking at. Yes. Yep.
So, and um, and where is the other other zone? Uh, one is the Crane Avenue from?
Just the Crane Ave from Upper North to the Allendale. You know, basically Crane Ave, basically Crane Avenue. We wanna make sure that that the customers that were at um Oak Hill Apartments can still get to the destinations that they need to go to. Um, you know, the the five B will service part of that. Um, and so we're gonna try and make, try and that fit that into that mold also.
So if they happen to uh buy that ticket and like if they are going somewhere out of the zone, can they transfer to the BRT bus? Because?
Good. That's a, that's a good question. Um, and because it's, it's RM Pay is cloud-based, so it's a tablet. It will bring you where you, where you need to go and and back. Um, let me see about a transfer, because I don't know why you would transfer if you can use this service.
Right, but you said like the destination has to be within the zone before they could come to Intermodal Center. It's not bringing them to Intermodal Center where they can transfer to some, any other.
BMC, I believe, is is where is like, is it, that would be the the uh medical or the employment center, right?
Right, so if they want, they're heading to south somewhere in Lee or somewhere south in Pittsfield. So they have to transfer to something to get to their destination.
Let me, let me check before I misspeak.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions?
Yeah.
I, I was just wondering, what is the rationale for limiting uh use to work and medical? I mean, I, I'm not really familiar with the route, but you know, in general, we would eventually, at least we'd hope to have this kind of service available to say elderly people who wanna go to a library or who want to go to visit somebody in
Right.
BMC. And there, there are all sorts of other important things for maintaining the fabric of community.
Yep, the elderly can still utilize our ADA services. So that, that's, this is just in addition to, um, and we're trying to limit its use right now. Uh, because we're using our current uh ADA provider, uh which are the little purple and white vehicles. So we're gonna use that call center. We're using those drivers. We're using those dispatchers. They have some excess capacity in their day. Um, and I, we don't wanna overwhelm the system and then have possibly jeopardize the ADA trips because we can't do that. Um, so it's easy, it, it's better to start small and then grow with it. And if we find that we're not getting uh enough um uh calls for this, we can always, we can always expand it. But you can't really start it big and then try to contract it if it, if it gets uh too cumbersome.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I uh in Cheshire where you're eliminating uh the loop through town. Uh, there's a lot of opposition to that locally. Uh, it does service the Appalachian Trail now and the Senior Center. And I noticed that you're including the Senior Center in uh Great Barrington, so I I'm just hope that you have documentation about the number of rides or whatever that uh you, that's gonna be missed on going on that uh loop.
Okay, well, I'm sure that'll be brought up at the Select Board Meeting on Tuesday in Cheshire.
Okay.
Which, which we will be at.
Oh, all right. That's what, that's what you're gonna be. Yeah, because the annual town meetings in June. I, I thought you did, you know, you mean the Select, the Board of Selectmen meeting. Okay.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Good information.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have presentation by Berkshire Housing Development Corporation. Tom.
Yeah, so this is somewhat of a continuation of our, excuse me, year-long uh discussion about housing. Um, housing has been such a, a critical issue, um, more recently so even. Um, and it has been longstanding, but more recently it's become more of an issue. And at, we wanted to connect up with um one of the developers and uh to see how communities could work with a developer in terms of getting development projects. A number of communities have initiated uh planning studies of various kinds, housing needs assessments and those types of things. But what do you do once you get some actions identified and how do you, how do you make that happen? So Eileen Peltier is the uh CEO and President of Berkshire Housing Development Corporation. Relatively new, Eileen. When did you start? Now, I, that?
Just over a year.
Yeah, um, and so she's gonna talk a little bit about her organization and how communities might engage with Berkshire Housing.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Tom. Um, so I thought I would just spend a a quick minute talking a little bit about myself and my background. So as, as Tom said, I've been uh in this role in in Massachusetts and the Berkshires for just over a year. I did grow up uh in Worcester, Massachusetts, but moved to Vermont and lived there for some thirty years. Um, and my career has sort of two trajectories and and I think they, they come together in an important way. Um, so the first part of my career was um in hospital administration, HIV/AIDS, really focusing on um healthcare and social justice issues. And then somehow I ended up um in house. That issues are quite often and the root is uh social injustice. I've quite a lot of work the past fifteen years um in housing, particularly in development. Worked in many um small communities in Vermont. I think it's relevant because Vermont is a lot like the Berkshires. Um, you know, there are a few big cities and a lot of small communities, so I'm familiar with attending lots of different select board meetings and and that kind of thing. Um, so I also focused on working at that intersection of health and housing, and I think that's really important as we think about the challenges around housing, that we always remember that we need to work beyond four walls and a roof. So housing is critically important, but if we're not addressing root causes and the challenges, and when I say health, I mean a capital H, health, um, we don't help people sustain that housing. So it's as important to build that housing and have it available, but also to have a community that can provide the supports people need to to stay in that housing. Um, and then lastly, I'll just say, um, you can't be a developer um working in community development, housing development uh without being a collaborator. And that is why I, part of why I love the work that I do, that because I get to collaborate with uh so many people, although I do miss the the uh in-person meetings, uh but we'll get back there someday. So really, five-minute overview of Berkshire Housing. So in nineteen seventy-one, fifty-one years ago, Berkshire Housing was established by a group of community members and business leaders who were concerned about the serious shortage of affordable housing. That's a little depressing to think about. Um, now I'm gonna tell you about all the amazing things we've done in the past fifty years, but we're sitting here today in a worse housing crisis than um probably we were fifty years ago. And I know that Tom said that you have talked about the why of that, and I think I, you know, you understand the challenges and that, that's not my role here tonight, but it is uh, it is sometimes a little heavy to think about the fact that we are still dealing with such a housing crisis. So Berkshire Housing does a variety of different things um on the development side, meaning actually, you know, building things. Um, we really provide a soup-to-nut service, um, anything from consulting to project management um to actually being an owner in the development. Um, and I will mention that for the past at least fifteen years or so, we had very limited capacity in development, but we got a lot done. Um, Elton Ogden, my predecessor, did a lot of great work. Um, but one of his parting words to me was build up the capacity in real estate development, which is something we we, we had talked about um before I even took the job. So we have, um, we do have a full-time director of real estate development, a full-time project manager, and at least a third of my time focused on real estate development. Um, so on the housing development side, in the past fifty years, we've done twenty-two rental apartment complexes that range from extremely low income to market rate to special populations like people with substance use disorder to the Campbell Farms Retirement Community. Um, on the economic development side, so we, we don't just build housing. Um, we did the Central Rock in Pittsfield. We did um the former KB Toys Warehouse in Lee. Those are the kinds of uh projects. So it's really at the core of our decisions about what we're gonna do is what the community needs. So the difference, you know, between uh often private developers are looking at what, what works, you know, what can I make work? Um, we don't go in a community and say, we're gonna do this. We go to communities and and develop a rapport and a relationship and say, what do you need and how can we help you meet that need? Now, if, you know, that's not to say that I'm not gonna push back if I think you're, you're not defining the need correctly, but we'll have a relationship and a partnership. We'll figure that out. Um, on the community development side, um, for many years, we did a lot of work um helping uh small towns and communities do things like infrastructure work, like sidewalks and waters and sewer systems and those kinds of things. I don't think that we've done a lot of that recently, but we certainly um have the expertise to do it. Um, so then just really briefly on non-housing development, which I think is the area that we're probably most interested in tonight. Um, we do manage the Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Program, so about seven hundred vouchers for Berkshire County. Um, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. We administer the RAF Program, which is the Rental Assistance Um Program, which you have heard so much about. That's the program that that grew about twenty-fold during COVID. So we've given out millions of dollars to many, many people in the Berkshires in the past couple of years. Um, but that is a longstanding program to assist people um financially who are are um in a crisis situation. We, along with the Berkshire County Regional Housing Authority, operate one of the state's housing community uh consumer education centers, which basically are meant to be a one-stop, single source of information and which basically are meant to be a one-stop, single source of information and referrals for anyone with a housing-related issue. So there's all this information on our website about all of this stuff. But just wanted to make sure that you heard the different kinds of things we do. We also have a long history of doing single-family homeownership development as well as homebuyer education and counseling for first-time homebuyers. And in recent years, really since the housing crisis of 2008, we have done less of that work, as does, as has most people around the country. Single-family development's been a challenge, but we are interested and continue to be interested in trying to figure out how to do more of that work because there is, as you know, a huge need. And then the last area of our work is property management. So we manage our own portfolio and over the many, the past 50 years, we have managed many other privately owned portfolio of over 900 apartments in some commercial spaces. Couple of quick just examples, you probably know this is us, but in Williamstown, we did the Cole Avenue Apartments that recently opened last summer. Those were 41 units using the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Bentley Apartments in Great Barrington opened as well last year. That was 45 apartments. And then one in our pipeline that is funded with a large gap, given the market that we are in. So this is Eagle Mill in Lee, Mass. So that one is, hopefully, we will be able to close the gap sometime in the next few months and get that one started. I'm sure you all are dealing with this in your communities with infrastructure projects and any kind of, you know, street work that needs to be done. Everything is exponentially more expensive right now, which is difficult, given that we're at this moment where the need is, you know, really intense. So it's kind of a hard challenge to be looking at both. So so to answer Tom's question, how do we work with municipalities? So first, first and foremost, as I said, it's really about developing a rapport and a relationship. And I think, to some degree, Berkshire Housing hasn't been as available to the communities because we were a little bit short-staffed. But part of our staffing up is to be able to be responsive to all of you. So the the biggest thing I want to say is call us early and call us often as you're thinking about what you want to do, particularly in the area of anything, you know, related to affordable housing. That building affordable housing is, I mean, you all know this in in your work. It's it's complex. It takes something that's already challenging, right? Construction development to a new level when you add lots of federal restrictions and federal requirements onto it. So there's layers and layers of complexity to this, and there is no sort of one pager that that available to attend community meetings, to consult, to evaluate a site, if that makes sense. If you have, sometimes communities start with a vision that we want to do something. We don't know what it is. That's that's easy. Other times they have a site that's been identified and they're trying to figure out how to make it happen. That can be more challenging because there may be reasons why the site, you know, works or doesn't work. So again, it helps to sort of be in conversation earlier. One of the things that, I mean, that is important for communities to think about broadly is to sort of set the stage for development, whether it is affordable housing development or private development, you know, programs who's, you know, the Gateway City of Pittsfield gets to use HDIP. There's, there are some benefits to being in larger communities for development, but that doesn't mean that smaller communities can't sort of compete. And I think that the way to do that is really looking at things like investing in your infrastructure. So, you know, developers do not love communities that don't have infrastructure, so water and sewer, right? So but that doesn't mean we can't, we can't develop there. So don't, you know, don't let a developer tell you that it can't be done. I've done many projects that way in Vermont, you know, that there wouldn't be a lot of choices if if I limited to communities that had what, you know, public water and sewer. But if there is an opportunity to invest in it, even in the downtown area, it can be really helpful. Zoning, 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 friendly zoning, bringing, and that's another thing we can consult on. I've consulted on many zoning plans, you know, review it just through the lens of how is the developer going to read this? And are there things in it that maybe come in it with like the best of intentions? I'll give you a really brief example. In a in a downtown city, city of about 10,000 people, but still considered, you know, a city in Vermont. One of the requirements was, you know, a certain amount of green space for any develop development. Well, when you're trying to rehab a downtown Main Street building to put housing in, I don't have enough green space, but that building's been vacant for 60 years. And everybody wants me to have, you know, to do that housing, but that's a barrier. So great intention, great idea to have green space, you know, for young kids who are living in these apartments. But there was a park, you know, less than 800 feet across down the street. So just, you know, trying to bring us into the conversation and have a developer read it, whether it's us or, you know, you ask one of the private developers that that work in the Berkshires. It's important to to set the stage so that developers are interested. I have heard developers say, I will never work in that community again because, you know, they have a really charging, challenging time with the select board or zoning. And it matters, unfortunately. You know, I think in my lens, another thing that I'm always thinking about is, is the community open and welcoming to affordable housing? And how? And that's not to say that we don't do projects when communities aren't welcome. We try to, we try to change, right? We try to change your mind if if there's resistance or work with you, if there's a contingency that really wants to have it in an affordable housing, you know, committee. And that can take time. But again, if we've got that relationship, we can work through some of those things. One other thing I'll mention is having a housing trust fund can be really valuable. So when we are looking at projects, where we're looking at federal and state sources, even if it's a small amount of money that you're putting into a housing trust fund and you're contributing something to the development of a project, it's a signal to the funders that the town cares, that the community cares about this project. So making some kind of financial investment, even it, you know, it doesn't have to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. But having a trust fund or had, you know, at least being willing, if you're doing a project to contribute some money, it matters. So then the last thing I'll mention is just, so Tom and I and others have been working. I'm sure he's talked to you about a vision for housing in the Berkshires that we released. And sort of phase two of that work is the Berkshire Housing Coalition. And Berkshire Housing Development Corp. is taking the lead on launching the Berkshire Housing Coalition. And I won't go into a lot of details about that. Maybe there's an opportunity in the future for me to actually come back and talk to this group about that work. And I think some, some of you, I know some of you were actually participated in that work. But this is basically a group that is going to be looking at advocacy. So the Regional Planning Commission will be working with all of you municipalities around some of those things I just mentioned, right? Zoning and so that you can sort of set the stage for development. This is more about the community engagement, the community conversation, ensuring that communities are welcome. And when they're not, that we can actively advocate to get, you know, people to come out and and get communities to become supportive. Also legislative at the state and federal level advocacy. So that will be being launched in the next couple of months. And hopefully it will be kind of an ongoing platform for for you all to, you know, be part of that conversation and support the need for funding and
All right, Eileen, I'm afraid you broke up on the last 30 seconds. Could you repeat that? Your connection is, has been going in and out a little bit.
Oh, wow, that's weird. I don't usually have that problem since I'm right in on Tyler Street in downtown Pittsfield. But I just said that, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm also happy just to have anyone reach out to to us and we can start a conversation about what's going on in your community and see how we can assist you.
Thank you, Eileen. Any questions? Okay.
Are you, are you the appropriate person, Eileen? Or is there someone else who should get a call?
No, it's actually me. It's kind of a big part of what I do, work with communities.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Eileen.
Yes, thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome. Take care.
Okay, moving along, we're getting there. Adoption of BRPC fiscal year 2023 budget. Buck?
Yes, sir. It's in, everyone sees it in your packet. It's way down on, I think, 243 it begins. The Treasury Finance Committee, I mean, Matt, and we hashed this out. Mary Ann put it together in a fabulous way. We approved it. We brought it to Executive Committee and they moved it along. We are spending more money this year, but we will also be making more money. And it evens out, there's a possibility that there might be a slight deficit, just a temporary blip. As Tom could get into a little more if we want to. But it it's looking pretty healthy. Any questions?
Anything to add, Tom?
No, I mean, I think, as Buck said, we've got a lot of projects. And I think, you know, we're in pretty good shape in in terms of, you know, next year. I think the blip that he was mentioning was in this fiscal year primarily. But I think that's just a very short-term item. The only thing I do want to do is I want to really thank Mary Ann for her efforts on this. It was really an exhausting effort to try to pull this together. We've had many more projects this year than we had before.
But I just, well, first of all, to be official, I moved the adoption of this budget.
Have a motion to wait a second.
I'm going to have a second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to add that I think the budget shows in a very striking way the the range of our activities. And, you know, as someone who's been a member of the of the Regional Planning Commission for a long time now, and I was also a member during the 1980s, the the sort of recent almost transformation of our activities is really, is very striking and is something to to keep in mind. You know, I think we're serving our region with a much broader array of activities. Our staff and the expertise of our staff has increased greatly. Our emphasis on public health, I think, is worth noting. And I just want to note that as someone who's not on the Finance Committee, but has been around a long time, it really is a remarkable achievement for for Tom and Nat and all the others who have been involved.
Thank you, Roger. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we need to approve this budget. It's a roll call vote.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary? Pedro?
Aye.
Buck?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Christine?
Amanda?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you, Buck. Next, we have the report of the BRPC Nominating Committee. Tom, did you want to lead us into this one?
Well, yeah, I mean, so our bylaws require that we elect officers at the first full commission meeting after July 1st. And we have a Commission Development Committee who created a subcommittee, the Nominating Committee. And I think Pedro is going to report out on that, correct?
Tom, I guess I'm a little unclear whether or not I'm making a motion.
No, you're not, you're not making a motion. You're just giving a report out.
Okay, so the recommendation of nominating subcommittee of the Commission Development Committee is to recommend John Duval as Chair, Malcolm Fick as Vice Chair, Sheila Irving as Clerk, and Buck Donovan as Treasurer.
Okay, thank you.
And when we do vote, John, or when the commission votes, there'll be an opportunity for nominations from the floor as well.
Okay. And I believe, Tom, we have one more item, which is your Executive Director's Report.
Right, and I'll just quickly highlight that, some of the items there. As as was mentioned, they're very pleased to have received a very large Brownfield Award for both Assessment and Revolving Loan Fund. I think this is really impressive to try to get that amount in. But that's also related to good work that Melissa Preventure has been doing. And if if folks haven't been attending these Grant Workshop Series on Tuesday, it'd been very helpful if your community is thinking about applying for a grant. We have our next one coming up on this coming Tuesday at 3 o'clock, where we'll have the Mass Historic Commission, Mass Cultural Council, and the Division of Local Services speaking about the various grant programs that they have. And also, we are going to be releasing our Venture, Berkshire Benchmarks, State of the County Report on Monday at an at an event. And folks are are welcome to attend there. The material is in the, the how to, how to sign up is in the packet as well. So just a quick overview of those items. Be glad to answer any other questions that people might have.
Any questions for Tom? Anything else anyone would like to bring up prior to adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
A move.
Thank you.
We have a motion, the second, it is discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Thank you all. Appreciate it.